Well, welcome everyone. Keely's gonna get the zoom started and then we'll get started. Hi Marty.
Hi everybody. Marty, Marty comes in here and I'll sit right here.
Alright, so we'll start with some housekeeping things. So first of all, the acoustics in here are not terrific for what Tom's doing. So we do wanna try to keep it to one person talking at a time. Otherwise you get jumbled on video and that's easy to call, I'm assuming as well. I do wanna mention that if you go around that corner over there, there's a boy that's a mop and now our restaurant, if anybody needs to use them. And then there's one on the east side, it's two, so just in case. But first of all, I just wanted to recognize our friends here from Sister Blantina. Super excited, they're gonna have a free day for the gardens on June 1st. So thank you for doing that and thank you for being in our community. I think that's terrific. Also that goes with the housekeeping items and I just wanted to maybe start and have everybody introduce themselves, so we'll start from the city side. I'm Steve Rieger, city manager, some of you have met and it's been my pleasure, and so if you've seen me for the first time, so it's nice to meet you for the first time.
I'm Lisa Robb, communications coordinator and media specialist for the city.
I'm Marty Hackney, I am the events coordinator, the welcome center manager, and the tourism manager for the city of Trinidad.
I'm Keely Williams, development services, so I'm doing a lot of the stuff that Wall used to do, so some of the economic development and then the city planning side as well.
Everybody knows Tom, so. Let's start here, Kyle, maybe tell us how long you've lived in Trinidad and what your claim to fame is here in Trinidad as well?
Oh, I'm Kyle Cutser, lived here for over two years, worked here for six years, and doing a whole lot of ads.
Hi, I'm Karen Rail, and I'd just like to know where it's all on this town. I'm an artist though, and this is my work anymore here, so yeah, I love this town, I just wanna be part of it.
Alright, thanks Karen.
I'm Ed Bordeaux, I have a gallery and a library number two. I've lived here twenty-five years, I've only been here about ten. Love it.
You're up. Yeah, most of the time introduce yourself.
Uh, my name is a man who needs no introduction. No introduction, I'm sorry, probably don't want to hear this. Howard Hackney, I've been around since eighteen ninety, I know I don't look it, but I've involved businesses around town, have mooses, I've been really involved in a project for about the past two years, it's coming along, you'd be quite the jewel for Trinidad, so glad that's what you might say.
Thanks Howard, you look so young for your age. I appreciate that. It's clean living.
Pat Howard, business owner and I'm on the Trinidad River removal.
Here I am, should be about eight years, business owner, or missing the job.
And I'm his wife Karen.
Karen.
We all took the Melonhurst room, had a couple of very easy turns, so super much to kind of know what's happening here.
And the further you are down the table, louder your speak for the microphone. And outdoor voice.
Okay, I'm Devon Corray, I am co-owner of the Animus Fine Art Galleries here. I've been here about three years.
And I'm Dennis Sexton, I've been here about six years, I'm a artist and I have my works in the Funky Galleries here.
I'm Camilla Campbell, I was born and raised in Trinidad, Colorado. I have proved a feat and gifted and furry for the last sixteen years, and I'm also the president of the Promise Market. It's gear enough to go.
I'm Peggy Wells-Orland, been here since 2004, and I think my only claim to fame is I live to give city council help.
And you want to talk?
Just for the life of the city council, so.
Yes you want.
Should we do another take? Do you wanna do that again?
I'm Jodi Alfred, I'm a partner at Marketplace Gallery, I'm also the secretary of the Arts Council of Trinidad, and so we're involved in First Friday Art Walk and things like that, and that's my big. Oh, I've been here for seven years and we chose Trinidad because of the art community, and so we're a big part of the art community.
I'm Emma Oates. I'm Marky Davis, I'm the owner of Marky Davis State Farm, and I'm also here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. I've been here about three years and also really excited about the art community and making downtown more vibrant.
Hello, my name is Lauren Hoffman, I am a business owner and just interested citizen. I enjoy coming to festivals, so can we not come through the front door for a second?
For a public audience, that might be harder to come up with.
I've been here a year.
I'm Krista Franks, I own Trinidad Tico in the Fox Theatre, I'm also the chair of the Main Street. So when I say good morning, it's because I'm always in this building in the mornings, sorry. My claim to fame is I make a kick-ass king cake that we sell so much of in February, so at the tea shop, so.
Yes you do.
I'm just saying.
My name is Lee Elliot Lopez, claim to fame is Carlos, that's why.
Lucky girl. And what else you do?
Oh, I do quite a few things. Carlos signed up Fisher's Peak Outfitters, I'm on Main Street for Prista, and now I'm on the New Tourism Tax and Vinyl Board.
Also organizer of Trinidad Art Fest.
Oh, and Art Festival. I got a lot of things going on.
I'm Carlos Lopez, born and raised in Trinidad, left after high school, came home ten years ago to help my family out with their businesses, and been here ever since.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Donnelly.
I'm just doing this, this is the audio.
Rebecca Donnelly, and I'm treasurer of Articade and also the special events coordinator, and I'm actually from Trinidad, born here and grew up here, and been back about fourteen years, local business in the community and.
And I'm Sherri DeLuca, and I'm president of Articade, and I was born and raised here, went away for a while, came back about eight years ago, so I volunteer with Articade and the hospital.
I'm Stacy Bonham, I've been here a year, I own a business in town and I'm the president of the Callup.
I'm Amanda Palmer, I'm the executive director of Articade, and I've been here for four years, and I'm your local weirdo.
Talk that way.
I'm Sandy Nichols, I'm the co-owner of Bellonna Pizzeria, and we've been in town fifteen years now, and my claim to fame, I don't think I can say.
Hi, I'm Carol Blotnik-Boros, I'm co-owner of Animus Fine Art on 2288 West Main.
We've got a few folks on Zoom, yeah, they're probably not gonna hear much from them, we've got Ashley Ryan from May's Roots and the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, Maddie, oh, it's Cody, never mind, it's Cody Keel. We've got Tracy Brad, who's a real estate broker advisor for the community group, oh, Business Manager for the properties and the Trinidad River Group, and Michaela, fine. And if they write to me, I'll tell everyone who they are, where they can remain anonymous.
I'm gonna just ask you anybody, I would do, it's just kind of, we don't have a formal agenda today, but I think what we'd like to be able to do is interact with you all more often than we have been. So to me, this is kind of step one, and what we're looking for is just general thoughts, feedback from you all, obviously this is, I mean, yes.
Can we shut that door because you can't hear?
I think we can shut the door.
How about it?
We're having problems with the air access in this building, so that's why it's so warm in here, that's the door being open, but hopefully it'll, the sun's going down, so we'll take a little. We'll wait for that. Did you realize something about the parks? Lisa, do you wanna grab maybe that door too, please? Thank you. Oh, is that better? Alright, everyone's going, hope it worked. So again, I think, like I was saying, we wanna engage with you more than we have been. Keely really kind of took the initiative on tonight, we appreciate it, and we're getting the summer season, it's a good time for us to be connecting with you all, certainly talk about things that are happening downtown and how that impacts you all, for some of you as business owners, but certainly all of you as community members. But I wanted to start by just kind of talking to you, some of you probably know some of the things going on with the city, some of you probably don't. So wanted to talk about some big initiatives that we're doing right now, starting with our downtown area, Matt. Everybody's ready. And so that is a process where we engaged a company called Stanton using some EPA Brownsville's money that we have in a grant, and they're gonna come and, well, they've already here, they're already starting the process, coordinating with the city, key stakeholders, community members of the community meetings, and really looking at our downtown, our central business district corridor, and where the opportunities are, how we can grow, how we can collaborate more, what types of businesses would we like to see to augment, it's the kind of businesses we already have here, so those types of discussions, and then come up with a really good framework for how we can move forward with making Trinidad's downtown the best possible place for the community. Keely's kind of leading for the city side on that, so certainly we can chat to her if you have any questions, and I'm sure she'll be in communication with you throughout the process as well.
My cards are up on the front, too.
Perfect, yeah.
And so are these.
Great. Okay, so that's going on, if you wanna mention, we have an RFP out right now, we're reviewing the proposals for the golf course, and so that's something that I think our city council is interested in, a lot of our community members as well. So what we're looking at here right now is engaging a consultant to come in who's an expert on golf operations and do a study of the course, and recommend a business model that's gonna be profitable hopefully and work really well for our community. I think that's a prime tool of our community that we're not engaging enough, so I'm really excited to see that process go through, and then hopefully get a restaurant up there and some other great amenities for our communities. Next thing that we're doing will be issuing the RFP shortly for strategic planning. So we wanna bring a city-wide strategic plan, which is an entire community effort, and really what it is is a five-year planning document for what we wanna focus on over the next five years. And there's, what I love about Trinidad is there is no shortage of ideas in this town, and no shortage of good ideas, I should put that caveat on there. But I think us as a community, this will be an opportunity for us to come together, engage the community, engage the council staff, stakeholders, and decide as a group how do we wanna move forward and what do we wanna focus on over the next five years. And that's gonna look, obviously quality of life is gonna be a huge component of that, infrastructure I would imagine is gonna be a big component of that, public safety, those types of things, and how are we doing all these things to keep Trinidad a great community and make it an even better community? So I'm really excited for that. We've signed the contract to do the national community survey, and if you guys, most of you probably don't know what that is, Trinidad actually did it in 2016, which was a good thing. So what it is, it used to be done through the International City Council Managers Association, but now it's administered by a company called Polco, P-O-L-C-O, they're a full nonprofit. They do a standardized community survey for communities across the country, hundreds of communities, and it's the same questions, and it's all on quality of life indicators, perception of safety, infrastructure questions, and it's a statistically valid survey, so they'll do a random sampling of our population, and they start by mailing out a postcard, notifying people that they've been selected to participate in the survey, and then they'll send them the actual survey, which they complete either in paper or online, and based on the sample size that we get back, there'll be a margin of error, typically it's less than five percent, and we'll have a statistically valid survey that will give us an indicator of even more so the areas that we should focus on as a city and as a community. Again, we did it in 2016, so I'm really happy to hear that, so we have some historical data, and we can look at the results of the 2016 survey and say, are we doing better on certain things, are we doing worse, where are we at, and where should we focus our resources? So I'm really excited to do that. The other thing about the community survey is we'll also have the opportunity for anybody who's not selected in the random example, there'll be a non-statistically valid survey portal as well, so we can hear back from our residents. We don't wanna leave people out and getting their feedback back, but certainly having the statistically valid results is helpful just from a scientific survey, social standpoint.
That's happening this year.
It's happening right now, we signed the contract just this week, and so we'll be engaging with them over the next couple of weeks and hopefully the survey will go out early this summer. And it'll fit the time with our strategic planning initiative, so I think, you know, really cool things there. Couple other things that you all may not be aware of, we contracted with Houston Temper to do a redesigned Simpsons Rest, so I'm really excited for that project, that to me is just something that's such a spectacular feature for us to have, and we really wanna get to the point where we're having it be a showcase where people can visit us and for our residents as well. And then, as Lee indicated, she's been appointed to our Lodging Tax Advisory Board, and I think we have a couple members here for that, so excited for that, the first meeting of that will be on the 30th, and so that'll be an opportunity, the council amended the ordinance and just changed the structure of how the funding's gonna work, and so there's a portion of our Lodging Tax of the quality of life, and that is to help out with tourism, of course, but then to preserve and maintain what we have. One of the things that's been challenging for me as city manager coming in is we don't have a Parks and Rec department, so all of our Parks and Rec maintenance is happening out of public works, which are the same crews that have to manage all the infrastructure issues, all the potholes, all the other things, that they're focusing on building maintenance issues and that type of thing, so we're spread a little bit too thin, and I think if we're gonna become that for the poorest destination that everybody wants, we have to take care of our amenities as well. And as we grow and develop and build more trails, I think it's very important that we don't just build trails, but we build them and have a plan to maintain them and keep them going. And then the last thing I just wanted to update everybody else on is Monday, yesterday, we had a terrific work session with Greenway Foundation, came down and gave us their preliminary renderings of their designs for our Riverwalk, and they are outstanding. Tom was there at the video meeting, so it's out on YouTube, so if you wanna check that out, they did some really, really cool graphics, and they even have a video where it's like a fly through of what it could look like. So that's step one, and then going from there, we'll be looking at land at position, and then certainly funding is gonna be the vision to complete that project, but I'm really excited for that, and I think that's gonna be a tremendous asset for our community. Actually, there are a couple other things I should mention to you all, we have Main Street.
Did you mention the Main Street project?
Oh, no, thank you, there's so much going on, as you can see, what is it? Main Street, yes, we just did an RFP and hired SGM, they're an engineering company, and we're, it's really a beautification project, but it's a full redesign of Main Street from I-25 almost all the way to commercial. And so you probably saw the street closed last week, it's quite, and we're doing some survey work and some geotechnical work, so that's getting the project started. They'll have some community meetings, so you all will have the opportunity to give some feedback on that, but we're just looking at, one of the main goals is when you get off on I-25 on Main Street, you don't feel like in downtown, you feel like you're out of Sonic and back in the Safeway. We wanna activate that area so it looks very nice and entices people to come into town, but then I'm so happy that we're sending down Main Street quite a bit too, so that we can really look at how we're using Main Street, design issues, traffic flows, that type of thing, so we'll get some professional advice on that. So really, really excited about that project, and then, there's a couple others, there's so much going on. Any questions on those projects?
Yeah, or the Main Street one, I'm just gonna tell you how that first street is completed.
Yeah, so we're just in design right now, so we don't have the construction budget to do anything on Main Street right now, sure.
But my concern is, I remember kind of the debacle that occurred on Commercial Street years ago, when that met beyond its term, and I wanna make sure that we held our performance bonds, et cetera, being delayed. I wanna make sure that, you know, the people like us on West Main Street don't have any challenges, because I know some businesses went out during that Commercial Street redesign, and for us being a pleasant organization, that would be something that would be potentially terrible, so I guess I wanna just kind of see that we hope that there's ways where we can have, one way of traffic on one side maybe, and the other side is free, something like that, so we can continue to have fluidity of, you know, traffic.
Yeah, and it may be two years out before we even get to construction, so it's a little waste, but to your point, one of the things that we asked our candidates, the engineer in their interviews with us was, what is your traffic flow plan? Because they will design that for the contractor, and the one we hired is basically gonna come up with two options, the quicker option is to actually close sections of Main Street and do all the construction work at the same time. The slower option is to close it down in by lane, and to your point, Paul, that's what we prefer, we don't wanna, you know, be closing down Main Street for extended periods of time and missing out on that traffic flow. So, but that's also something that you all can comment on as well as we go through the public process on this, but I really appreciate you bringing that up, and we wanna be sensitive to that as well, and I don't want, whatever we can do to mitigate any loss of business or any impact to you all, we wanna do that.
Not questions, but some comments, so.
Sure.
And the first is concern, and the concern is, we have a conference planned for 2017, screen-driven, lobby, and a cap production. And so I always wanna question plans that don't have action behind them, and I think when we have a plan, we have that action behind it, and that's the action, almost like before you build a trail, how are you gonna maintain it? Before we create a plan, how are you gonna implement it? The thing I'd like to see is, because this is about festivals in downtown, closing a facade, sort of like a seat and maybe attitude, the pedestrians over the cars, and it's not just, there's this false narrative that parking in town is actually good for the core of the town, and it really isn't, when you actually pick pedestrians, outdoor dining, those things in a town, then everybody's right when it goes up, in a town, the vibe of the town's better, and the tax revenue just goes up with that. So I wanna call attention every time we have one of these meetings to the parking that's under the underpass, and keep that as a vision, that we can actually make that a connect, use some connected tissue to the parking under the underpass, it's about nothing fifty some on maybe one of the parking spaces, easy to get into town with a dirty walk all the way, so that works separately well, maybe some late fare and signs that work with regards to that. I always think if you're gonna really embrace the career of, I'll approach it up a little bit, I always think if you're gonna embrace the creative class economy, which I think we want to do, that certainly working with CDOC to take some of those beams to come down from the overpass and maybe neuralize those things a little bit would be a good thing, you could almost make that underground parking attraction versus a liability right now.
Those are conversations that are gonna be part of our going planning, so I appreciate you bringing that up, and I just wanted also to mention, we are working on a land deal with CDOC right now, so the gas station that's right here on Main and I-25, that area of land is just kind of the big thing behind that, CDOC's gonna deed that to us, and then we wanna make that a roof walk and downtown parking as well.
You need that connected tissue regardless of.
Exactly, and to your point on connectivity, so, but you're not wrong, parking is something that we can.
And so kind of last thing, well, two last things, really appreciate the council and Steve you, looking at the golf course, that really is an asset that's become almost like a privatized, golf course for a limited number of folks, I love all those guys out there, but it really, it doesn't, if you don't even sort of know that shit, I would say, and I appreciate you doing that, and just my comment in regards to the four folks that are out there, you guys, we had a great draft recently, and so, so personally as a citizen, taking out the posts, and I'm just all for you guys, and yeah, you too, Tom.
Tom too.
Tom too.
John Tom.
Yeah, great job.
I just wanted, Marty just told us, I'm Marty. Okay, well, I think that for what I hold true to why, you know, we gathered you here, really what I think we're looking for, and I'd like to, you know, kind of talk about this a little bit too, but, so just wanna point out, we don't put on events as a city, which is something that I would like to change. So again, not having a Parks and Rec department or dedicated staff that can dedicate their time to doing events, we just don't have the resources to do that, but traditionally as a municipal, we would have several events throughout the year that they're putting on, sponsoring. I'd love to see us get to little ones, like maybe a winter shopping stroll, where people can go do holiday shopping before Christmas, and we engage our downtown, have a lot of music and opportunities for people to go to businesses, small things like that, but even to bigger things, where we have our own festivals that we're known for as a city, and that we can, you know, really put on, other than the girl of the city of Trinidad. And as we work towards getting, you know, that semblance of a Parks and Rec department and some staff that we're really used to deploy that, I think that'd be terrific, and there's been a lot of good ideas that have come across my desk already, was it Go-Head Festival?
Go-Head Festival.
But for now, we have substantial interest though in private events, and so I think this is kind of the beginning of the conversation, if we have a private event that's coming into our downtown, requesting to close off the street, that's where I'd be looking for some feedback from you all as to, you know, we just wanna know what the impact is, how we can coordinate with that, it's challenging for us, because, you know, these private events, they're not our events, so it's give and take on how we can balance, you know, you can't dictate what they do, but on the other hand, we can encourage striking of that. So I think now is a good opportunity for us just to kind of listen to you and get some feedback from you, and that just helps us as we interact with these event organizers, and maybe we can get to a point, one of the things we're talking about is even creating some kind of brochure or packet that we can give out to private event organizers that say, here are our businesses, here's for those of you who want contact information, here are some resources, here's information on how you can engage the community as well. So I'd like Keely to kind of take it from here, but, and then Marty, of course, if you wanna say anything.
This is Keely's being, I'm a little hard on them, I'm listening.
Yeah, so, but, and just so our words clear, so Marty is the person with the city that, you know, takes in those applications for those private events and the processes permitting and everything that surrounds that, and checks with all of our department directors to ensure that there's no concerns from a gas standpoint, or if they need power turned on for life, Marty coordinates all of that stuff. Amisa is our communications bureau historic mayor, and she's been doing a terrific job of really bolstering up our communications for the city and really helping us be a lot more transparent in our operations. And then Keely is our new development services director, and she wears multiple hats, but she's also taken on economic development, which is what her interest is in, that coordinating with you all to see how we can also, you know, help with this planning to make our businesses more successful. So I'll turn it over to you with this one.
Yeah, so I just, I know what Marty said, and I wanna listen to what people have to say, because we've kicked a lot of ideas in our internally, and I think it's just time that we get some feedback from people in the streets, during festivals, maybe they're just a participant, but what you have in front of you, and you passed out a bunch of these, we have some questions, and so you can fill this out online, you can, we can talk about it together right now, or you can write it down for me if you'd like, and you can give it to me, and I'll process all that information. The first question is, if, this is talking about street festivals on Main, so kind of think past festivals that we've had, maybe we wanna do something in the future, maybe we don't want festivals at all, during the festival, if we were to have one, whether it's private or by the city, do you want to have a tent in front of your business? Do you plan to be open in front of parade, like with parades and festivals? Do you intend to sell out? Do you intend to sell alcohol, you have an alcohol license? Would you allow other people to be a pop-up tent-style in front of your business if you weren't, if you didn't want to participate? Things like that, I would like to just get your feedback on, and try to, you know, see what direction we go in as a community. So with that, and maybe with some of these questions in mind, I'll kind of open it up for discussion.
I think the current setup that we have is not working for businesses nor festivals.
And what do you mean by festivals?
Do doors used to be on either side of the street? Puts it in front of the business, but also has the sidewalk. It causes a festival worker to have to work not only in front of their booth, but from the back of their booth, so they don't have safety for storage for their festival. I actually wanted to have a rest service room along Main Street, but because of that booth having to split on either side, it does cause that problem with ours having to, you know, business from front and back and cover up businesses. I understand that there's concern for getting fire safety for people down Main Street. But if we were to put the booths in the middle, we don't have anybody covering up anyone's business. And we have to make sure that they can access, protect, and work with these. And then, I mean, think about it, the bad boys don't care, it's a terrible thing. No one complains about that. But it's just such an easy fix to let booths be in the middle, making sure that we have at least one side of the street to be able to get a safety vehicle down. So once the height is small, the other, and then that fixes the whole problem.
I would add that, you know, wherever we got a festival downtown, we won't end up downtown for the summer now. But we have good success whenever we're doing any kind of festival. So we have art play events, we do, we're not just, not even related to just arts, eighty cards. Completely separate, but we do well. When we have car shows downtown from other groups, we do well. One single the Mile is downtown, we do well. So we find them where there's meat in the streets, or, you know, there's dough in the drawer. So it really helps out when we have these kind of frequencies of occurrence, and no matter what they are occurring. If you want to shut down a small section sometimes, maybe that might be useful. They feel like, okay, shut down the most street that's not good for their business. And I, and I think about like my neighbor, Ken across the street. He's got a business where he's serving customers in a different market where they're coming in to get their hair cut and things like that. But we've got to be mindful of those people too, because they don't want to face a car very far. He serves an elder demographic that pulls up right in front because he's got his, they do those like. You know, they just come in and they just, they're old, they have offers sometimes. We get to be positive in their needs and abilities too at the same time. But I think we can find a balance to make sure that we notify them. So for instance, this past Saturday, we had a parade. We didn't have any notifications on the street until 6:00 a.m., the stickers up. So a lot of us were taken aback. You know, they're like, hey, there's going to be a parade. It wasn't properly announced as well as some other events.
And even the where it's blocked out is much different than we traditionally have in the past. It's blocked as well, practice blocks, which is, it seems excessive for such a small area. And again, wine, wine, alcohol is also potentially be overly for teens, just to be real. And so those events don't help me at all. And I have the four spots I have to fight for anyway. And that's just the business owner now. That's Main Street, we've talked about doing some type of newsletter, communicating those businesses, Amisa and Achilles, we all talked about those things. And so we do, because we stand on both sides of it. We are other businesses that have no idea these events are coming, no way. Because we would love to support them and plan around them. Oh, we're celebrating this, we're celebrating Memorial Day on Saturday. The roads are closed, we'll have coffee out front early. But I can't plan it if I don't know those things are coming. So instead, I would rather not open and pay someone to be there for me when I know that I do not have a customer walk through until 1:00 p.m. On a Saturday, that makes or breaks my business, period. And we struggled so hard last week with this, I know we're concerned, not mad. But we had three days in a row of shutdown downtown last week, and that hurt our small businesses incredibly in the morning. And not communication. So again, I think we're all putting these pieces together. But as the business owner, I'm heartbroken when I pull up and I know we're not making any money. And so it's really heartbreaking. Now, it's Main Street, I know you can do that in community. So I'm on both sides of this. But yeah, he's right, where are we blocking, where we closing off? All the way to the Safeway entrance was absolutely not needed on Saturday. That was, they closed up past the Safeway entrance. So no access, because the parade didn't, we didn't get a semantics. But that, we just know where, when, how, I think those things are so important to us.
Appreciate that. I think in general, we'd like, here to talk about is, we'd like to get to a point where we just have a standard.
Right.
Like, you know.
And we know.
Go time.
Yeah.
And not like there.
Standard.
Sorry, it's both. It's like a standard closure plan. So it's not different for each event and all over the place. So just generalization, so there's.
But every event is different, so how could that be standardized?
Well, I mean, it's much easier.
The parade route is a parade route. That doesn't change for us, so that can be consistent. Now again, the RAV, some sort of musical, those things change. But on a Saturday or a parade downtown, when we're depending on that, we should know where that street closure happens, so we can facilitate and do the extra, put a tent out, whatever's needed. But again, just to have that information is not happening. Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add one thing. So when we do have disclosures downtown, I know we've been having discussions about car parking challenges like that, but I think first and foremost, we need to enforce the signage that we have already, two-hour limits. So we had this single the Mile festival, there was a car parked right in front of our Super Friday night. And they're probably doing the smart thing by not, you know, driving after the quality of this. But the next day, the car was there the whole day. And there was also another car in front of Dale and Karen's place too, for a good part of the day. So that was challenging, that we had to put our canopy in front of our door in front of Moose's somewhere. So that kind of excludes us on a visual ability to watch our goods while being inside of a store. But I think, you know, the next day, the car was still there. I had to call the police and to get the vehicle towed. Well, they called the person, they came and made it up. But it comes down to the fact that we have these, you know, notices and signs, and we don't even enforce them. So I think that is something that needs to be addressed.
Is there a better way to report that than just calling the police? Do we as business owners need some sort of, I'll have to say, we're having trouble, this car's been here for two months straight, asking you parked in front of my two hour, for two months? That's not okay, actually, we should be doing something about that.
Your best bet is always to call a non-ruinsy dispatch.
Okay, great.
And report it.
Got it.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
A couple things that I'm very encouraged about, a lot of the staffing here. One of the things I think that we, citizens of Trinidad, business people, need to really ingest right now is the fact that we want to become a tourism community. Learn how to help our tourists live their life, dogs chasing cars, catching them, really quite many. So our aspects of this, and I think you're exactly right. We had these two slots month from May through October that are available for festivals, you know, regardless of who's bringing it. And also the fact that we're going to block off from Maple to Amos. Total on the box, that's it. And that's where we put the, I agree with Lee, that we have to have that festival feeling, because it's just a part of any kind of mountain town. I've been in a lot of these business and things like that. People want to get out and wander, and, you know, they've got to, they just want to just have a good time and who we are, what we are, so we've got to be able to present ourselves not only in the business community, historical community, art community, have all that stuff, so that they know, well, I'm going to go the second week of August and you're having this really good, here's an idea, the Chili Fest between New Mexico and Colorado. You got the best of it. You know, just little things like that that are, they're going to be of interest to individuals. And the art aspects of it, I've had so many people come in and say, well, you've got to really come in the art community. And I said, we're all working on that. But with art, those history, history, so you've got to kind of get that combination and really know that, and as a welcome community to all our vendors. You know, they come in, it's like a group shit college to a place, and they come in with a lot of money to go. That's kind of what we have to look at. Make sure the streets are clean, the parking is there, the signs are there, you've got flowers up, flower boxes, you've got all these things just make it look like, boy, we've got there that, let's, let's continue. And then advertise what you've got, you've got a lot of stuff.
One more thing, if we are going to close first, like a standard festival, have a standard thing, we need to make sure that festival is able to have activities or booths or just toilets on the entire corner of Main Street. Because I know that West Main Street got horribly left out for many festivals. The RAV, the San Pato, Vicentennial, there is the closing of the year campus, without the ability to get to the municipal parking lot, which is so deep. And then the polling is closed, and there's not even a single booth, a single musical act, or even just the toilets down on Howard and Rice side to attract people and speak to people to go down there again at the Vicentennial.
Yeah, there were three other houses there too.
It was ten of them.
We didn't have any, from Manicalla Park on there, it was nothing, except for Park to Park and Walk, we didn't have none of the leadership. And that's what I do not want to see. So, I mean, what is the program? Yeah. Look, you're talking about the Main Street, that they're closed by a program, you can't get around them, those runway streets, they can go, they do go around the street all the time. All the time, all the time.
Yeah, and instead of just saying, street closed, say, event closure. Just a simple change of that, where people think, oh, there's an event, you might be passing through that doesn't know the event, just simple, simple, easy wins, y'all. And we have to, we really have to look at, like, we don't live here. If we're going to make this work for outsiders, and so we have to put ourselves in a shoes. Closed, but where do I go? Is there a detour? Is there some other place I can park, or is there a parking lot? Not just that it's closed. We know it, we know where to go, we know where to park. But we have to put ourselves in a shoes and say, I came into town just stopping. I want to go to your event, and how do we make it easier for them?
Some stuff, a gear.
Yeah, there's just some really small things that you can do to make it, if we're going to be tourism, then we have to think outside of our neighborhood. We have to think of people coming in that don't know, that don't are aware, well, the Catholic school, even part there, you know, they don't know that. And so, but things like that, I think are important to communicate with our visitors.
Thank you.
I'm curious to learn, and maybe I, Marty has heard that, but it sounds as though the, of your entity and the council doesn't have the capacity to host events in this structure. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
So I'm curious, you know, building off some of the other points made, how do we facilitate an easy yes for people that want to host events? So how can we provide a single source of information about who Trinidad is? More of a piece of narrative about, you know, the art aspects, outdoor rep, etc. You know, pull in some third-party data, statistics around the number of visitors or stats of traffic on I-25, right? All the different story, storylines, but put that into almost, I don't know, say, an investor playbook, but an event playbook, right? Get, make it an easy yes for people. So that way, we are still calling in those kind of events that best reflects in line with the community versus things that might potentially be outside of the Trinidad wheelhouse and might deviate from the kind of narrative we want to tell.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And again, you know, we're, we're kind of depending on those private events right now to provide these activities, and I really do want the city to work hard on getting us hosting our own events. But in the meantime, of course, and I think your share question, anybody can come and apply this permit, we have that well advertised on our website on having to go through the process and make that happen. One of the things with the change to the lodging tax advisory, or the lodging tax ordinance is it completes funding for some semblance of what Paul mentioned. And we've been talking with the chamber as well, and I think there's a tremendous opportunity in small business meetings, this is a great space, Mitchell's a terrific space. We have a new hotel that's a conference space. I think people who ordinarily would come to Trinidad to come here, so it may not be an event that's a fair festival downtown, but it may be a big business meeting where people are having a doubt about it, and they can go bar hopping, they can go get something to eat. So you're absolutely right, and I think we need to make that as easy as possible.
So you're going to build up the capacity, compile that information, standardize it, bring it, make it a downloadable PDF, you know, on your site, hosting it there. One of the things that just came to mind on my list, and it was, I think it was Screenline Communication, about two tours, right, to be compatible. But for example, I host folks from out of town who come to stay in Trinidad. And I just got a query recently about what events are going on. And admittedly, I am not a big social media person, horrific at Facebook. But the only way to really know, and I wasn't going to, I didn't want to, I paused actually whether to tell the guests or not, but I'm thinking, gosh, you know, the best way to find out is to go walk around and look for flyers in windows or, but I did the layer of finding Facebook and trying to search dates or individual posts and, you know, publicly available third-party consistent event calendars.
So we have one on the city page, and on the visit Trinidad's all around page.
Yeah, and all the events that we have going on. I, yeah, I was going to say, the one, I notice a lot of businesses, and this is, I'm sure just a lot of information over little businesses, but there's always a gap between, I'm noticing between what's put on Facebook versus, you know, so there is always overlap, I guess is what I'm offering.
And not all the events are Facebook made to that?
Correct, to the calendar. You know, I know there's like feeds and data scraping, but like, you know, again, I just want, I always double check to make sure I'm not missing anything, but it's hard to do.
There's also the fact that they all put out a calendar, and you need to inform them, they put their, they put their default on the calendar.
I think it's relying on business owners taking time to, you know, input those events, which is a barrier potentially. I know there are data scrapers essentially that are allowed in, that go on and it's complicated, they will crawl and collect all of that and feed it through, so the business owner doesn't have to actually post the event multiple places.
We do that, it's still harder. In New York, it's still harder.
So that's a lot difficult with us because of the AIA compliance on the website. We can't just feed information in there. The alarms will go off if two parents are introduced to each other in a mixed code. Generally, a business owner should be sending their events to me or Audra or Marty or whoever it is to be listed. When I have free time, I would go on Facebook and I would look for events to put on the calendar. But unless it's sent to me, and it's not on Facebook, I have no idea that it's going on. So yeah, you know, send it to me, I would be happy to share it. So there's also, I'm sorry, go to the point. So there's also the ability to post your, as an event organizer, you can send in the information, there's a form on the website. They can fill out all of the information that they want out there, and then it will publish to the calendar on the tourism website. As with any event that you might be hosting, the almost is kind of on the organizer to get the information out, you know, you build your flyers, you get them out, you get it distributed, you let people know what's going on, because you want your event to be a success. So that's kind of one of the elements. It's like, they have the ability to fill out that form, and then you publish it right to the event calendar on the tourism website.
One of the things I've noticed is, it's a lot better than all of that was just 24 months ago. There was so, the city wasn't doing a great job, you know what I mean? The tourism board had just gone through some website updates to be able to increase the calendar and improve the calendar. And so if you look at this, when we started doing events, because it was a really great opportunity for us to like take over events. But now it's getting harder, and so I'm saying, we need to let, we need to be less competitive in some of those areas, because the city and the tourism folks are doing a better job of those events. What I find sometimes happens, is somebody waits till Wednesday to tell us about an event on Saturday. And it's really hard, they're all waiting for the best, okay? So you can't get ahead of that, no matter if your calendar's good, because people aren't making their plans from Wednesday to Saturday. So I, I see that we're actually correcting some of those things right now. And some of the folks, Steve and myself, have been trying to make the event kind of things. Because some of that's actually happening with Nisha's work and the tourism's work there. And we do look forward to the time where it's set, we scraping data and doing those things. I'm pointing somebody to someplace, this more a color favorite site, where people know that's, if you want to get an event seen by everyone, you get it on the tourism site, or tourism vice versa site, or you get it on the city site, and you do it as easy as possible. Right now, you really guys have got a hodgepodge of everybody trying to fill in, you know the leads there, and none of us really can do a good job of doing that, if that makes sense.
I, so I really, I really feel, listening to some of this conversation, I feel that Pat and Steve both do a great job of what they're doing, but I feel like maybe we need to fix the merchants one, because I truly.
because I truly believe that I have not seen the city ever in many years do such a great job that Nisha's could do it, including what you put up today, a daily thing of all the things that are going on today in the stream of Facebook. And I think that, I was so impressed by seeing that. I think that the local merchants need to know that that exists because what you did was nothing short of spectacular based on what I've seen happen in the city before.
Agreed, thanks, I appreciate that. So one of the things, you know, we are happy to help you promote your events. We are happy to help you share your events. But else, we don't promote those events. If they're not our events, they're private business events. What we do for the calendar and what we do is share events is basically a, you know, a service. One hand watching the other second. So if you guys can send me your events, I will get it up on whatever it needs to be on. But as far as the calendar goes, everything that gets sent to me and everything that I find on Facebook goes up there. So if there's something missing, and you know the event organizer, have a conversation with them. They can come to any of us at any time. There's a lot of resources in town for how to market your event. Like, I see a lot of people taking pictures of flyers and putting it on Facebook, and it's hard to read. And, you know, if, if the flyer was printed, there's a digital copy somewhere. So I'm happy to help anybody with some tips. I have a couple of documents that I can send over to you on where to post your stuff in Trinidad.
Great, you have a question here.
Yeah, Audrey, is there, has there ever been any coordination with the Chronicle? To, to, because I know, what I, I love going into small towns. And the first thing I do is I find a local newspaper and I start flipping through it, you know? And I, I haven't seen anything through the Chronicle, Chronicle. I don't know how that works. Is there a way that people could easily just sort of have a database to log on to? And, you know, that merchants could, you know, just enter their date and specifics? And then it shows up in a designated spot in the newspaper? I mean, could this city, does, does the city kind of arrange maybe a, a public service sort of section of the newspaper where things like that could show up?
No, and, and most of that is going to be something that the Chronicle would likely want to charge for.
Yeah, but I'm hoping that, like, weather, you know?
Sure, I totally do what you're saying. It's, it's certainly something we can bring up with our friends at the Chronicle, to see if they have thoughts.
It just seems like that's a place where people go for information. If I go through a town, I should think of going to the tourism, you know, site. But it's like, oh, newspaper, what's going on? Give them your feedback.
Yeah.
I actually, I actually think having like the other paper in town, you know, that does do those things and it's free. I actually think that the, we and the Chronicle, if there were a place, and I'm pretty certain Chronicle folks will do this, rather than, because they're, they're also charged for, through the issue. So you're limited in the number of people who actually write the paper. If there were a place that we or them could send people to, that we knew was authoritative, that we knew was, was, you know, encompassed most of the events, it would be a lot easier for me to grab space back and either Q our code or link somebody that something is authoritative and, and my friends at the Chronicle, our friends at the Chronicle, than to try and pull up ad space and content space for that, if that makes sense. You know what I mean? It would be easier for them, I think, it would be easier for them to do that to their paid subscribers and the folks who buy newspapers. We can do that on the free side of our paper to do that, rather than going out of space. And I, I might want for here, there, or contents. If I knew some place was authoritative to do that. And I think we're getting close to having that.
How about a kiosk?
Yeah.
Well, pretty much.
We have two of them, and all the events will be in the kiosks. You can walk up to the kiosk.
Well, I'm talking about somebody coming into town, so they're not here. They're on the street, the kiosk actually, actually battered eggs for three M sizes, which you may already be here for. It's not the first point of entrance of why would I go there? Is there something going on this weekend to go there? When's, when, we used to do something with the art, the art fest today. Well, that's not until July, because we've got a lot of time to pound, to pound that drum.
That's not a bad thing.
That's exactly right.
So I think, yeah, it's okay, we do want to have these conversations, but, I mean, we just want to make sure we're fully talked about, you know, logistics and Main Street and what we've got to work here. Just real quick, I apologize, I do have to leave in a couple of minutes. I have a meeting with some dignitaries from the military and the mayor. But I do want to be here for this portion of it, but I will stay here a little bit.
How about the back? How about the back post, back here? No one, no one back?
Okay.
I do it, I do it.
This is your close-up.
I was at a city council meeting and there was a vote upon these festivals because there were complaints from business owners about the amount of trash that's left behind. And what they were, in my opinion, what, what the business owners were wanting was trash collection more often after these events. And I can say, going to these events, it has been anywhere from three to five days before the trash is picked up from, from a large downtown event, a large one. And all that city council came up was to limit the number of festivals serving alcohol. And one of those events was Articade, which does not serve alcohol. So some other event lost out because Articade is the best festival ever, in my opinion. So I just wanted to bring that up. But maybe Steve has already taken care of that problem of the creation of Parks and Rec Department?
Yeah, it's not taken care of yet. That's exactly it. It's lost, you need to have a department like that. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm hearing.
Okay, now that she brought up the trash, oh, that is. I, I'm embarrassed of my student. I, I have been, I have been over in that corner for 15 years. And I was sweeping out on the streets on a daily basis because there was so much trash. And I'm still seeing it down the commercial. I, 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 I tell this every time someone comes into my shop. I wish no offense to city council or any of them. I want you guys to take a group walk down these streets and see what tourists are seeing as they're walking. Don't drive, because you're not seeing it. Because you're seeing other cars, you're seeing the windows. I want you to take a walk downtown. It is unbelievable sometimes, really bad. And that is heartbreaking. I walked by the Colombian Hotel, and I'm saying it, guys, I don't get it from the point. The windows, if I was a tourist and had to walk by those windows, I really appreciate anything about our city. I'm sorry, I have to go there, but it is, our streets are terrible. The trash, the litter, the leaves, the sand, everything. I'm including everything on the street. It leaves a good sweet job. Me and Zoe were out of sleep and I just rips today of the sand because if the wind picks up, it's all over my shop.
Let's face it, we can, let's make sure that's on there. Yeah.
I just want you guys to walk.
You know, I might say it to Becca and Bill and you, because she's right. Years ago, we had a guy, I think his name was Alma. And he worked from the first week in May to the last week in September, eight to two. And all he did was go on Main and Commercial Street. We had less businesses at that time, but our downtown area was spotless. For, we figured it out, it'd be less than $20,000 to do that for that five months of tourism season. Hard time, eight to one every day. He had his car, everybody knew him, but the streets were really glorious. And when you pick the foot in ads in newspapers and magazines, what is $20,000 anymore? But that's happened for 14, 15, a brief period of time. It was just, it was great for our downtown area. And I really encourage our city when we think about advertising and promotion, people like pretty. You look at a mall on one quarter that, tonight's scene, that, you look at the mall in the other quarter that looks pristine and it's raining and everything's cleaned up, where do you pull over to? So, you know, there's such a little amount of money to make sure that our downtown area, no matter if you're business owners that are working hard and don't have the time because they're working by themselves, or empty buildings, by having somebody that manages Main and Commercial, which is our mall area, on a daily basis is, is not comparable to anything that I've seen.
And Steve does possibly have to do a background history and put in a little bit of that.
And, and we're also, we're, we had actually scheduled a citywide cleanup date. We asked city employees to give up the warning of their job to go around the community and clean up in downtown. It's actually one of our focus areas in the range. So we're still hoping to get that rescheduled. The other thing that we're trying to do is reformulate our partnership with the correction facility and hopefully get some, some inmates to be able to come help us with some community service things as well. But yes, the Parks and Recreation, I agree with you, our community works as incredibly important.
There's also parole leave program, too, that's made to be in the streets, too. If the right, if the city applies for it, to have parolees pleading, you know, or drink for Saturday or whatever.
I do want to circle back about the replacement and how it's hard for furniture shops. And I think we can fix it and put it on the center of the street. Putting it on the center of the street, I've been to many festivals and many cities and many places, and if I'm in the middle of the street, I don't see why Trinidad would have that area. It just makes sense when you see other business colleagues doing it. Shouldn't we do it? Shouldn't we get the law? Police people would be able to make this happen. They should make some new copies.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, back, back, we, so thank you. Okay, and I apologize if I have to go. But I'll leave my lovely babies, they're much better looking than I.
Are we, are we ready to wrap up or shall we continue?
The one thing I'd like to do is maybe talk about working all together again in terms of number of people.
So we want to do it once a month? We want to do it once a corner?
Okay, I want once.
Once a month?
Once is one.
Yeah, and Tom's, Tom's got one more minute, too. So maybe we should, I wrote a lot now. And so I would like to maybe come up with some plans together and maybe submit that back out to you all based on the comments that you've got. And see if we can just make a little progress. Maybe just a little progress, you know, just how we put one foot in front of the other, you know? And then you know, it's time here, and everyone's busy. So I really want to thank everyone for coming out. I really appreciate it. This is the first one I've had to ever run. So I appreciate you being nice to us.
Can I make one question? Can we start the conversation about the rural, about the dynamic?
Alcoradine?
We have to start talking about that as a community that wants to be each of those. So, you know, I know it's been a problem. But it's something that has to start. We have to at least talk.
Okay.
Let me wrap up.
Is there an authoritative set of rights regarding booths for festivals? That kind of shows the rules and regulations?
There's only, there's only a couple main rules when it comes to filling up our streets. The first one is we need to be able to get emergency vehicles down the street. So really, it's just a matter of planning. I don't think there's any reason why we can't put booths in the streets. And the second thing is accessibility for people who are traveling up and down the street. Maybe you're in a wheelchair, maybe you're in a motorized wheelchair. Or maybe you just don't want to get bumped when you're walking down the street. So just making sure we have clear aisles. When you go to somewhere like a Greeley or Creed or something like that, often you'll see them all in a row for that reason.
Where can I find those?
The, in writing, where, where, like what the rules are. So for, so the accessibility one, that's an ADA standard for public places. So you need to provide three feet on a sidewalk or a walking space. And then for the emergency vehicles, I don't know exactly where in writing, but...
It's on the event permit. It's on the event permit. There's a, we're at an event and park permit. And there, nothing is addressed on that permit as far as placement of vendor booths. So that might be something we need to look at to add that to the event permit.
Would be helpful for those of us planning events, for sure, to have that in writing. Because we talk to you about it every year, but we still are unclear where we would put vendors. Because we have cars on the street, we can't put vendors down the road of the street for Articade. So it would be nice to have that in the...
So not every rule works for every event. And that's just, that's just the way it is. So it's hard to put hard and solid rules on where the placement of vendors goes because every event is different. So that's kind of one of the reasons it's not on there. But it's not some, it's definitely not something that we should overlook. We, we'll, we'll address that and discuss it.
Thank you. Good work, good.
Do I get the last minute?
You, you get the last minute?
Do I get it? Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Guys, real quick, Tom Murphy, Trinidad Times TV, Maler Murphy Funeral, I know that's the odd one. I made a decision a long time ago to get involved in politics. And we have an election coming up. If you guys really want to make a difference in Trinidad, start running for office. I know a couple of you are, I know some of you have. But serving on boards and running for office, if you want to make a difference, there's going to be a bunch of seats that are open for city council. And we need good people to run. And one of the first things you do, if you get on a board, then they start to know who you are. Carlos Madrid got on a board. People were starting to know who he did, but he got a job somewhere else. You know, well, he's traveling, but he's still here. If you want to make a difference in Trinidad, you want to have a say, then just come to a meeting. Run for office. Make a difference. We just need some people.
I'm sorry about the knee, next time, next time, and it'll be hopefully fixed.